We'll call the February 3rd City Council Meeting to order. We have Commissioner Banksen's going to do the invocation, pledge, and the fact of the day.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this beautiful day. We thank you, Lord, for your gracious hand upon us as we do the business of the city and for the people. We ask for your wisdom and your grace as we work together for the common good. And we thank you, Father God, that your goodness daily knows of its benefits according to your word. So we give you the praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On February 2nd, 1887, the first Groundhog Day is celebrated in Punxsutawney, Pennsylvania. And I watched that movie last night. But I won't start again. If the groundhog sees his shadow and runs back in his burrow, the prediction is six more weeks of winter, winter weather, and no shadow means an early spring. Groundhog Day started in the early Christian tradition of candle mass, where clergy would bless and distribute candles needed for winter. The candles represented how long winter would be. Germans expanded this tradition by using hedgehogs as a means of predicting the weather. When Germans settled in Pennsylvania, they continued the tradition with groundhogs, which are native to the area.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
Fun fact.
Okay, does anybody have any additions or subtractions to the minutes? I've got one I need to, Susan. On the page 16, it's water loss was approaching 18% and that in the two and a half weeks, they have found $12,000 per month in revenue, not $12,000. So if you can just add per month in revenue, then that, I'm good with that. So any other additions, subtractions? Have not looked for a motion to approve the minutes as read?
So moved.
Okay. Second motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor.
All right. Susan.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm David Hoffman. I live at Tayside Court in Rock Springs Ridge. When I spoke during the public comment period at the January 20th City Commission Meeting, I focused on just 10 young families who have moved to the Phase 1 corner of Rock Springs Ridge community, emphasizing that these families bring vibrance, promise, and energy to our neighborhood. For these young citizens, the value of their homes is linked to the qualities of the community, making these two dimensions inseparable. The spaciousness and attractiveness of the community are inextricably intertwined with the value and allure of their homes. Like an endless number of consumers in the American marketplace, over time, they invested trust that their home acquisition in the context of the community is what they paid for. Throughout the American century, the 20th century, an article of faith rose in the marketplace: a four-legged stool. One, the quality and integrity of product. Two, excellent customer service, that is, the customer is always right. Three, fair price. And four, competition that mitigates monopoly. These dynamics contributed to a shared trust and commitment to fair play. Here in Rock Springs Ridge today, why should we not believe that these standards are still in play? Why not? But what if these 10 young families, as well as 1,310 other homeowners, discover that they are being subjected to a shell game? They thought they were getting a certain product, when in reality, they end up getting something considerably less in worth, less in attractiveness, less in community identity and value. Their American dream was compromised. At the Fields of Fame Amphitheater Community Meeting on January 12th, we attending citizens were told by reputable authority that the kind of unwelcome intrusive building and development we could be facing will likely mean an existing home value average decline of 20%. That is right, 20% home value decline. Builders and developers may believe that their best defense of their position is unfettered absolute property rights, but in truth, property rights in our nation historically have always been attenuated. Thus, if we view this ongoing threat nearly 12 years in the making, the basic metrics stay the same. Three out-of-town wealthy land barons are moving down the tracks, now like a freight train, to devalue 1,320 family legacies, 1,320 family hopes and dreams, so that they can gain many, many millions, a frontal assault on the 10 families whom I mentioned at the beginning. You, Mr. Mayor, and City Commissioners, with all due respect, have an opportunity to stand up for the middle class in our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anybody else, Susan? That's it? Okay. All right. Consent, we got five items on the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull any of those items or not look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, I guess it's Edward or...
This is Jeff's item.
Okay, Jeff.
Good afternoon, Jeff Weatherford, Public Services Director. Here to talk about the Hanover Oversizing Utility Agreement that the city has, that on this, I provided this map, and I'm going to talk about the different elements of this, that currently in the light blue, which may be easier to see on your documents than on the screen, the light blue coming up from Holly Street going up here, the city already had in its CIP to build this year and had $370,000 set aside for. Additionally, we have, we have need to provide a connection in to the subdivision up here that we're required to provide, that we don't currently have plans to do and the developers agreed to do for us. And then the latter part is sanitary sewer lines that will run up there and then into a future city lift station. The developer, what we're looking at is we're looking at planning not just for this development, but for the future. So where the developer is looking and they believe they need, let's say for the 16-inch water lines, that they need a 12-inch water line to supply their community, we feel that we need a 16-inch line to provide for our further needs out there. Additionally, they were looking to do a 6-inch sanitary sewer line up 441 and then a 4-inch line into the neighborhood, and we feel that we need a 6-inch line through the, or 8- and 6-inch line through the entire community. So the development code allows for us to pay the developer for work that either we already had planned, such as the first $370,000 worth of work, or for the material, the cost of material difference, if we wish to upsize beyond where they, that their calculations show they have a need. So what we're proposing here is that the water here at the top, US Highway 441, Holly to Sadler, we want for them to construct a 16-inch line that we already had planned. We had $370,000 planned. The developer has a total cost that is going to cost them to do it. It's actually $443,000, just shy of $100. And then the additional line that we did not have plans from Sadler up to Oneida to build that is going to cost them $179,708, combined cost of $623,451.50. That we will, that currently we're scheduled to collect $224,456 in impact fees, we're looking to have them build this instead of collecting those fees, which will leave a remainder. Okay, apparently I pushed the wrong button. Yeah, it'll leave a remainder of $400,995.50 that we'll need to pay the developer on the, the water lines. Additionally, on the sewer, we're in a little bit better shape. That it will cost the developer for the first section $76,900 and then for the second section, $19,547, it looks like, 543, for a total of $97,000, just over $97,000. At the same time, we, the developer will be paying us $1,110,234 in sewer impact fees. That we're proposing to credit that $97,000, which will leave that we'll continue to collect $1,000, $1,13,231.40 in impact fees from the developer and just credit them for the $97,000 of the sewer work. When you look at the $370,000 that we've already got us, got set aside for this project, what we'll be doing is we'll be entering into an agreement to pay them the 400, but it'll be an additional $30,000 roughly that we have to add into the, into the CIP to pay for this. So the only other thing I think we've got is that the agenda item says that this will be approval to allow the county administrator, the city administrator, to sign the document. The original agreement said the mayor will be changing the agreement for the city administrator to sign the document. With that, I'll answer any questions about this complicated issue.
Questions for Jeff? Any questions? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute the oversizing utility line and partial construction reimbursement agreement with Hanover Land Company LLC.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, public hearing, ordinance number 2813.
Okay, ordinance number 2813. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Finance, Division 2, Fees, Section 2-98, fees for copies of documents, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Okay.
No changes.
No changes. All right. Any questions? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2813.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2814.
Okay, ordinance number 2814. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Chapter 66 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka, Florida, entitled Public Service Tax by amending Section 66-44, entitled Imposed, Providing for the Levy and Amount of the Tax by amending Section 66-47, entitled Exemptions, Providing for Agricultural Exemptions, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Okay. Edward?
Mayor, Commissioners, I know this is second reading, but I just wanted to point out again, this is the public service tax issue where we're having the change. I wanted to tell you that I did speak with Duke Energy today, this afternoon, and they've reached out, Todd, which is the customer service person that deals with our larger customers, commercial customers, he's reached out to, I think, three or four of the big ones, and that seems to be going very well. So he says that they, they seem to be, he's answering their questions, and keep in mind, we also have the customer service line for our customers, our citizens as well, that they'll be available if there's any questions as we move through the process. But the change, again, I wanted to just point out that the, there will be an exemption for natural gas for agricultural purposes. That is one of the changes. The other change is, is that the tax on the electric service will be 10% up to the 5,000 kilowatt-hours, then it will drop to 4% from 5,001 on for the electric. Gas and water will be 10% straight across the board. There will be no change, I mean, there will be no, there's no tier structure in that piece. The other thing I wanted to point out was that, keep in mind, it generates an additional million, approximately, an additional million dollars, it will, it could generate in revenues as we get ready to go into budget season. We'll be, we'll be projecting these numbers and monitoring this number. That we had also talked about the possibility of a reduction to our mileage rate, but we'll see, you know, if, when we get into budget season, we get all the revenues put together, what, what that could do, what that, what kind of an impact that would have. And that also gives us flexibility to, to maybe implement our, our merit, our 6% merit program that we had. It gives us that flexibility to, to, you know, maybe look back and, and implement that back like it was, because again, this will get, generate some additional revenues. The other thing is, keep in mind that it does not take effect until July 1. The statute requires 120-day notice, so we will notice DOR. Once it's adopted, we will notice DOR to give us that 120-day window, and it has to be, it can only be effective on a quarterly basis, so July 1 would be the earliest that it could be effective, and so that, that would be that date. It was duly advertised for public hearing on January the 8th in the Apopka Chief and on January the 22nd, so all advertisements have been met. And then another thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to really thank Duke Energy for their hard work and their partnership, because this has been a long, pretty, pretty little battle here. We've been working a lot of hours and a lot of time, and I'll miss their phone calls because it kind of was like a weekly routine, but I really, I want to thank them because they've been great partners in, in working with this, working through this with us. So with that, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions for Edward? Okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2814.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2815.
Is that Smith?
An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 78, Utilities, Article 2, Water and Sewer Systems, Division 2, Fees and Charges, Section 78-51, Sewer Tap Fees, by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78-53, Initiation of Water Service, by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78-54, Water Use Charges and Deposit, by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78-54, Wastewater Use Charges and Deposit, by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78-58, Water and Reclaimed Water Meter Reading Rejects, and by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 3, Reclaimed Water System, Section 78-91, Connection Charges, by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 3, Section 78-92, Reclaimed Water Use Charges, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Setting an Effective Date.
Michael?
There are no changes to the ordinance?
No changes. Any questions for Michael? Okay. Anybody from the public? Sure, come on.
I will confess, when I look at this item number three, just as a citizen observing, I, I don't get, I don't get what this is about. You're, you're making a change, but does it mean your rates are going up? I have no idea what this means.
So, like the last meeting, basically, the ordinance itself is codified with the amounts, the actual physical hard charged amounts codified within the ordinance. This particular piece of business makes it where we're erasing the actual figures from the ordinance itself and basically saying, go see this rate schedule in order to see the most updated rates. The next piece of business is where we're doing the resolution around the actual hard charges. This makes it easier that if we change rates, we don't have to go back to the ordinance itself to recodify it. So it's more procedural in nature, just to say, this is the framework, the ordinance is the framework, but go see this fee schedule to understand what the actual fees are.
Okay. I, I get that. So this sets, if I understand what you're saying, this sets a stage for increased rates.
No, no, it just sets it so that you can do it by resolution versus ordinance.
Okay, so it, it really makes any changes forthcoming, it makes it more expeditious?
Yes.
Is that it, in essence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2815.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2811.
Ordinance number 2811. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from Transitional T to Residential Country Estates, RCE, for certain real property located at 1228 Usler Road, comprising 5.06 acres, more or less, and owned by Alberto Evans Esteban, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, Severability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date.
Good afternoon, Allison Williams, Planner 1 with the city's Planning Division. Today, we have a request to rezone a five-acre parcel from T Transitional to RCE, or Residential Country Estate. The subject property is located at 1228 Usler Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property in order to divide the property into two lots. The Transitional Zoning District requires a minimum lot size of two and a half acres, and the Residential Country Estate requires a minimum lot size of one acre. DRC recommends approval, Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval, staff recommends approval, and myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Allison? All right. Would the applicant want to come forward, or are you good? Okay, we're good. All right. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2811 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Resolution 2021-02.
Resolution number 2021-02. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing rate schedules pertaining to the City of Apopka Water Use Charges and Deposits, Wastewater Use Charges and Deposits, Distributed Wastewater Treatment System Use Charges and Deposit, and Reclaimed Water Rates, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Michael?
All right, good afternoon. The following is the resolution, which is implementing the previous ordinance that was recently adopted, which establishes the rate schedule for utilities. The amounts that are preference in each schedule are the same that are currently under the, under those fees that were adopted, I believe, October of 2020. So there's no increase in the current utilities fees across the board for the city. The only change, of course, is the creation of Schedule C, which is the Distributed, Distributed Wastewater Treatment System Use Charges and Deposits, as that is the program that is currently underway in order to help assist the transition of some properties from septic to a hybrid sewer system in order for us to complete the, the goals of coming into compliance with the BMAP in order for protection of the springs. So this, this resolution is what you've been authorized under the previous ordinance to adopt, and it'll establish the rate schedules for the year until, as is within the code and within the ordinance, if there's any fluctuations and, and changes, then it will come back for you for another, for a review and the rates, but there's no changes to the rates.
Which, we're now in, we've started the, the rate study, I know, so we'll, Edward, you want to kind of?
Yeah, that, that rate study, as you know, we, it was supposed to be completed and then COVID hit, and we've, they've extended it. Since we're doing Water Office of America right now, Water Office, or America's in here and they're reviewing everything, I think it's important that we get through that first because you're, we're finding revenues that, that need to be included in that rate study, and that will have an impact. So I think it's, we, we're, we're still working with the rate study people, they still have all the information, but I think they want to wait and make sure we get every, all the pieces together before we look at, at establishing a rate.
So we're probably in the next six months, we'll, we'll come back and, and do a rate adjustment, could be up, could be down.
Could be up, could be down after we hear from Water Office of America.
Right, right.
And so, and then again, they'll, they'll do their full presentation and everything once they have all the, all the data. But I think it's important right now, like you said, Mayor, we need to give Water Office of America time to finish and make sure that we have all revenues included if we're going to establish rates.
Any questions for Michael or Edward?
No, just a comment, because I know how astute observer Mr. Hoffman is. I just want to make sure, because in, in the ordinance language that just changed, those numbers differ from what's in the resolution. It's just that the resolution numbers that we're approving today were already previously approved and business done last year.
Correct.
So if you were to compare apples, apples to apples in our agenda packet, you would see a difference. It's just that this resolution is reflecting what we already passed last year.
Correct. The, the figures that are in this resolution are actually the same ones, if you go to the city's website, that are listed for the utility rates. That's what's on there. The actual figures that were on the code, because the code was not adopted, was not amended, we didn't go through the entire ordinance process, those are, those reflected the previous rates.
Correct.
So the rates in the resolution are the same ones, they're the ones that were effective October 1, 2020, and those are the ones that are currently advertised in our website. The only one that's not included is the, is the Distributed Wastewater System, because that's currently a system that's not included. That will now be reflected on the website.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Michael or Edward? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-02.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2021-03. Michael?
Okay, the attached resolution is the establishment of the city's social media policy. I think the important distinction is that this isn't a policy that all employees and all ones have to adopt, to abide by, but this is the policy for the implementation, the operation, and the day-to-day maintenance of the city's social media pages, and how information from the city will be disseminated through its social medias, as well as the [inaudible]. as well as the conduct of the city within its social media. So that is the purpose of this social media policy. We were, the various departments, along with IT, worked to establish this, which is offering, which provides policies and guidelines for how to handle the city's transmission of information through its social media sites. This is not a behavioral control of employees on what they can or cannot do through social media. This is the city's operation of its own social media sites.
Can you, with that being said, because when I first read this thing, I've got red flags going off left, right, and center, because all of us who sit up here on council are included in the language of this policy. And the way that I read it, there's no kind of bifurcation to say, an elected official... The way that this reads is that me, as an elected official, has to go through some director-level position on staff to get any content that I wouldn't want to put on social media approved via staff level.
No, that would not apply to this. I think the reference to the elected officials is basically a guideline, and also, a, for lack of a better term, warning, that your social media pages, which, as your professional social media pages, completely distinct from your personal social media pages, your professional social media pages are subject to archiving for sunshine law purposes. And under that guideline also, it serves as a guidance, especially as what has occurred in other jurisdictions in Florida, where you have to be careful as elected officials that you do not communicate or comment on each other's social media pages, because that has been construed as communications that are inconsistent with the sunshine law. That's the extent within the social media, mainly just as a guidance to warn as to the type of communications between commissioners through their social media sites. But the actual policy is, if it's, is enumerated, is basically limited to those city pages. So the city's Facebook page, the city's Instagram page, and the other, the city's YouTube page. That's what this policy guidelines. But the additional caveat, that one caveat is still, just as guidance, that members of the council should not communicate through social media with each other, and sometimes it could be as innocuous as commenting, as one commissioner commenting on another commissioner's professional social media page.
So the very first sentence of how this thing opens, and I'm going to pick on this one a little bit. So, "This social media policy establishes City of Apopka's city, policy and practices addressing the use of social media, broad term, for official city business by elected officials, employees, and officers, and offers policy information for the public's use of social media for city business." There's really nothing in here that designates this is the City of Apopka's social media presence. This just is a pretty broad statement, say, "All social media for all officials." And so there's nothing on here, and maybe you can point to me from a legal opinion, of how this, if I'm just reading this from the position that I'm in, all of this wouldn't apply to me.
Well, it's for city business. So it's limited to the scope.
Someone could argue that my city commissioner page, if I decide to, let's say, for instance, when we were just having this conversation with Brian the other day, say I had a restaurant that wanted to offer some, you know, some food packages for our Saturday concert events. If I look back here, this says, "I can't do any commercial advertisements which are not promoted by the city." So me, as my own personal commissioner page, I won't be able to go out and publicly endorse a small business if I don't have the approval by the city. Because I want to read this literally as any policy should, right? And so I just, it's a slippery slope for me to look at this and not be able to point to something that says that this doesn't apply to me on my personal city page.
Well, it could be your priority, if you wanted to, by motion, to have an exclusion, to exclude. I could exclude the city business by elected officials on the city's social media platforms. Therefore, then that would exclude your pages as commissioner pages. However, you're still going to be subject to the other requirements for archiving, just for consistency with Chapter one-nineteen. But that could be, you could address that by motion to exclude that, to approve with the changes, and you can discuss those changes, and we can implement those changes upon approval.
So, you know, a lot of times the city posts different advertisements or things that are going on, and I tend to share the page, both on my personal Facebook, because I may have residents in the community that follow me and necessarily don't even go into the city's website, so they don't have any idea of what's going on in the city. And sometimes I share it both on my commissioner page and on my personal. Is that a problem?
No, because...
And I really don't state anything, other than just kind of repeat whatever the event is.
No, there shouldn't be a problem, because the message you're sharing is already an approved message of the city.
Okay.
So that would be no difference, and I decide to share it on my own personal social media page, you're already sharing an approved message. You're not creating an unapproved message. You have a message that's been approved, it's been vetted, it's the official city's position through their social media, and hence you're sharing it. It's like handing out flyers that have been printed by the city, and you're handing them out. It's somewhat, it's somewhat, and substance similar.
When it comes to, when it concerns each of us as commissioners, I know that you had come to me, because I had liked something from Kyle's page. So even a like is not something I should be doing.
It's...
And I think I commented, he had posted something with his, someone in his family.
Right. I like to advise, and are always on the side of caution, because it just takes one person to report that, and you end up getting involved in a situation that was readily avoidable by just simply avoiding the conduct. So that's why I always advise, I didn't give, I didn't, I'm not going to expressly prohibit, but I would strongly advise that communications between commissioners through their social media pages are restricted, namely because it's come up in other instances in other jurisdictions where it's caused a problem.
I did read the case on the one in Dade County, and it was actually commissioners arguing with each other over some issue that was on the agenda. But I don't think any of our commissioners post anything that...
No, and I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you are, but I'm just, I'm just strongly advising and to be considerate of that, just because it, I like to avoid issues when they're easily avoidable. And I advise, I advise my clients, but you are my clients, I advise you to, it's best to avoid situations when they're readily and easily avoidable.
So we can't talk to each other outside of the city council, and we can't...
You can talk to each other, you can talk to each other as long as the, as long as the subject of your conversation is not something that can be reasonably foreseen to come up to a vote before the city council.
Well, we all, yeah, we do know that.
You can discuss the Yankees-Red Sox game, but you can't discuss if, say, the Yankees decide they want to move their spring training facility to Apopka.
Okay.
So that's the distinction.
Okay.
Mr. Bankson?
Yeah, well, they spoke to my concerns. Any infractions or concerns that have precipitated this for us? Or is this just simply housekeeping, and we want to set the policy and standards?
I think it's housekeeping, if any, I can defer to IT for that.
But I'm, you know, I'm, I wonder, should, you want to just postpone this one? And if you want to work on some language that would get Mr. Becker comfortable?
Happy to provide feedback.
And we'll bring it back?
We can do that, we can table it to the next meeting, and then we can communicate on what we want to see. That's not a problem.
I'd appreciate that.
Everybody good with that?
That was, I appreciate that, because that was my concern, I felt like we were included in that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, let me ask, who's responsible for archiving our commissioners' pages?
IT.
IT.
They archive your emails now.
I know they do that.
Yeah.
So they archive our Facebook pages as well?
Your professional Facebook pages, not your personals.
Yeah, yeah, you're...
Yes, I'm talking about our professional city council pages.
Yes.
Not yet.
No.
Rob, come down in.
When I saw that, I'm going, I didn't know anybody was archiving that, and I didn't know if I was responsible.
No.
Robert Hitler, IT Director. Mayor Commissioners, part of this policy is also to protect the commissioners from your professional page, and part of that will be me archiving it for you. We have an archive service that I'll connect into it, and I'll give you options of how you want to do it. One of them will be seamless, where you won't have to do anything, I'll take care of it. The other one will, you'll be a little bit involved in it. But it's a fairly painless process, and it's behind the scenes. But that's something that was going to come out of this, so it's not happening. The mayor's page is being archived at this point, the city's page has been archived since it started. But, you know, moving forward, try to protect everybody, your page will be, or your professional page can be archived.
And along those lines is that, so if somebody says an obnoxious comment on your page that's out of bounds, you can't delete it. You can, and what they would do is they would pick up and they would archive it. You can hide the comment, but you can't delete the comment.
Okay.
And so it would be archived.
You can just hide the comment from it.
Yes. The basis for that is it's been determined, your professional Facebook pages, for example, are basically public forum. And because it's an available public forum for the public to speak at, you cannot, you, as the, we have to keep them as public records, because the posts become public records. Therefore, deleting a comment is the equivalent of destroying a public record. So that's the purpose, is archiving. Also, there have been cases, and this came up in my prior jurisdiction, where you cannot block certain members from being able to comment on your pages, because you're closing a public forum. Either you block everybody, or everyone's open to comment, and then the comments can be hidden if they violate certain policies. But the comments will exist, the record's not deleted, that's the purposes of archiving. It's the, it's the world we live in today.
So the way that I interpret your comments is the... So right now, we could have five different social media pages, between us, five up here, and all of them have a different email address, not necessarily the City of Apopka official email address. Right now, it's not part of the policy, so I doubt that each one of us has that tied to our cityofapopka.net email address, because that allows proactive public records keeping, because it just comes through the normal email cycle that you can store. Assuming that this isn't passed, like, the policy isn't passed, would we still be having the conversation to say, okay, like, mine's linked to kyleforapopka.com, or whatever it is, at gmail dot com? Would that then be, say, are we setting up a process in place to say, "Here's an offload of all of this content that you can have for public records consumption"? Because right now, it's still up for a public records inspection. Someone could say, "Hey, I want to look at all of Kyle's emails for the last two years," and I have to provide that, which I rightfully would do. So are we still going to go down that path, even if we don't pass policy?
Yes, I mean, if it's, if the, if you, the use of your social media page for official actions, as your actions as a city commissioner, that would be subject. In the event of, at the time of, and I know in other jurisdictions, at the time of campaigning, so usually advisable to separate and have your own separate campaign page, which is not necessarily for official business, and therefore not subject to certain, to that inspection requirement.
So assuming we get the language right on the policy, we should ideally have a clean break to say, "Let's expire the ones that we currently have, have a new social media account established with our apopka.net email address?"
We can work on that.
On a go-forward basis?
We can definitely do that. We can create within the policy, basically, the policy to govern, as a separate section within the policy that will govern your official social media pages, be they on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, or whatever other media platform. I would strongly suggest against those that have the automatic, those, your stories type, where they aren't necessarily archived, if we can get them archived. But that's something that we can just create a section and work with. I can work with each one of you individual, with your ideas of what you'd like, in order then have a separate chapter, have a separate section within there, which is the commissioner's official social media pages.
Okay. And this was not meant to, you know, I'm not, I'm just trying to protect us more than I am trying to... I don't, you know, I don't care what you do, it's just, but, but, you know, if it comes back and they're asking for Facebook, you know, I saw a Facebook post, and from a public records standpoint, we can't give it to them, and you've deleted it, or whatever, then we've got to, we might have an issue. So it's definitely not meant to try to silence anybody. It's just, you know, covering us.
Just from experience, this, prior jurisdiction I was at, we had one of our commission members, all of a sudden, mysteriously, somebody's posting disappeared from her comment sections, and that turned into potential litigation that nobody wants.
So from a literal standpoint, if I have a misspelling and I edit that, I'm not allowed to erase that or change grammatical issues? Is that...
With it being archived, it'll actually show the different drafts.
Okay. Not that I make constant grammatical errors. Speak to text, you know, that's...
If you have a document, you see a miss...
For the mayor's page.
Yeah, I was asking for him.
Well, I think, I think if I recall correctly, once, if you tweet something, you can't delete that tweet. So that tweet with all its grammatical and misspellings is forever, is forever there in the ether.
Okay. So we're going to put this off?
Look for a motion to postpone this to the next commission meeting.
To table it to the February seventeenth commission meeting. Or if you want, if you want more time, we can table this to the March third, if you believe that's...
What's everybody's pleasure? Next one, or you want to wait another, go to the third?
How much time?
I don't know how away from each other we are on this topic, so I'm not sure. I don't know if it's worth kind of having a draft that we can review before official approval.
It's all going to depend on how much time you'll need to, for us to get together to go over them, and then I can just tweak this in such a way, that's, that's just, if you think it'll...
I mean, I can provide thoughts as early as possible, so either way, it's good for me. I just didn't know if postponing it a month would just allow us to have a more mature...
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it practical for all of you.
Yeah. I mean, the next meeting would be fine, because that's about two weeks from now.
Right.
That's more than enough time.
Okay, so feel free to give me a call, or just walk into my office, and we can, we can go over this.
What's the next date?
Look for a motion to table...
The seventeenth?
Two thousand twenty-one dash oh-three to the seventeenth.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, twenty-two-one dash oh-four.
Resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-four, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, Authorizing the Mayor and City Administrator to apply for a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for acquisition of Camp Weewaw, Providing commitment to amend the capital improvements element of the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan, and develop the property, should the property, or should the city receive the grant. Authorizing city officials to take all steps necessary to move forward with grant application, and providing for an effective date.
Michael?
Okay. The purpose of this resolution is to authorize the city to move forward with the application for the grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund to help assist in the acquisition of the Camp Weewaw property. This resolution and the authorization, as well as the language within it, that there's going to be a commitment by the city council to amend the capital improvement projects list to include the Camp Weewaw, is a prerequisite of the application process. So we have to show this as part of the application in order to meet the criteria established by DEP for the, for this grant. So that's the reasons for this, for this resolution. It's mainly, it's a prerequisite for the application process. I also, this will provide this council a formal opportunity to approve the city's actions to move forward in obtaining the grant for the purposes of acquiring the property.
Okay. Any questions for Michael on this?
The only question that I have is, we're submitting this application, but are we committing to buying Camp Weewaw? Or is, can we do this without the, because we haven't voted on actually purchasing Camp Weewaw?
The, the fund, the mechanism for the fund is actually funds for the acquisition. The way that the, the fund is designed is that entities that apply and applicants actually receive the funds prior to purchase.
Okay.
So it can be used for the purchase. Usually you have one year from the date of being awarded the grant to close.
Okay.
So at this point, we are still, we still haven't negotiated a closing or even moved forward to it. But it's something, it's another, you know, it's an arrow in our quiver to have additional funds that'll assist in defraying the cost of acquisition, because it is the state's goal to try to conserve open spaces, and this grant allows for that to be included as part of the contribution for us to purchase. So this, this resolution is not authorizing the purchase of the property. What this resolution is, is you're authorizing the city to go forward with the application to obtain grants for the acquisition of the property.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation, because I did get that question. So the fact that you made it public, at least who's ever listening, understands it.
One of the things that we signed right out, when we saw this application, one of the things, the first letter we signed was... the things, the first letter we signed was a letter that gives us retroactivity, so we could purchase the property before the grant became available, but get the money toward the purchase price. So we signed that letter. Obviously, nothing we've done to this point has committed us to anything. So, but, you know, this is, the grant application had to be in today, and we just met the deadline. I mean, I, we'll talk about that tonight, six o'clock, but it was a whirlwind to get us to the point where we are today. And we'll, we'll kind of go through those tonight at six o'clock.
Right, Craig. That second, that special meeting we're having tonight at six o'clock is also a prerequisite that we have to complete in order to apply for this grant. For full disclosure, this is not the only grant the city will be applying for to help defray the cost of acquisition. If the city so decides to move forward, there are other grants. The application period for the other grant, which is the Florida Forever Funds, that application period doesn't open until September. Also, that applica, that grant is, can be used for reimbursement. So it'll offset costs that were incurred in the purchasing of property for the purposes of leaving them as recreational open space and conservation lands.
And, and you've got, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question, because I, I, when I spoke to Commissioner Moore, had reached out to me and said that Mayor Demings had put aside a hundred million dollars to be able to conserve, to buy land to conserve. So I wonder if, if, if that information is available, that we can look into it?
I, I can communicate with the county.
Yeah.
I know that we were inquiry, I, as part of this whirlwind process to get the application, I was looking at other funds. I, I am familiar with, prior jurisdiction I was at, Volusia County has a similar program that the state has. It's their Volusia Forever. But that's a charter program of the county in which their money's allocated aside for, for such conservation. If the county has a similar program, then we will apply for it. We will apply for every possible program that is out there for the purpose of, of contributing to the cause, namely because it's an overriding public interest to preserve open space, recreational space, and conservation land. And the state has set aside these monies specifically for that in order to help offset what is basically urban and suburban encroachment in Florida open lands.
Okay.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I was just, and this is probably just detail, the resolution itself talks about 50% matching funds, but then the application, it says a million and a million, almost appears to be matching.
The million.
Not that it really matters anyways, because, you know, obviously, the transaction would be more than that, and we would use the swap value in order to, I just don't want there to be any hiccups in the application process because there's a disconnect.
And the way the grant is, we, we can ask for a million, but we can be awarded less. We, you, you can ask for up to a million with the state, with this, the applicant contributing of, up to a 50% match. So we may be awarded less. For example, last year, the City of St. Cloud was awarded, I believe they were awarded $400,000 for their acquisition of Hastings Ranch. So they were awarded this grant. The city has also been awarded the other Florida Forever grant, and this grant also allows us, if, say, we were to acquire the property and move forward, this grant has a, it's a two-pronged grant. There's money set aside for acquisition. There's also then the rest of the funds that are not used for acquisition are used for operation and development as well. So we are, we can reapply for the developmental aspect of the grant for, for monies to offset the costs of operating, of developing the facility. So if we need certain improvements, we can request LWCF funds for, for that purpose.
Yeah, I was just, I'm sorry, I'm nitpicking. On page five of what we have here, line one is LWCF funds requested, a million bucks. Local funds available. If I'm reading the resolution, it says we have to do 50% match. So why is that, say, a million versus 500,000?
Oh, it's 50% of a million. Where the matching is 50% of, of the requested amount is what we're, is what the applicant is to match.
50% of a million is 500,000.
Right, that's what, that's what the matching, if awarded the grant, the city agrees to commit 50% matching funds in the amount of 500,000.
Maybe, maybe it's stupid that I'm trying to reconcile, but I'm trying to reconcile this page in the packet to the, what the resolution language says. Maybe I'm, maybe it's, I'm wasting time here. I, I, I just want to make sure.
The request is for the million-dollar grant. As part of that million-dollar grant, the city has to provide matching fund, 50% matching funds.
50% of the million, or 50% half and half of the total cost?
No, it's 50% of the million, is my understanding.
Which is 500,000.
Right. That's the language in the resolution.
Okay. So this, this piece of paper is kind of meaningless, then?
What this, well, what this resolution does is simply, it's authorizing the city to move forward with the application, and, and to provide the 50% matching fund. If we are to receive less from the, it's, it's, it's a process where we're going to be tiered with other applicants, so we're going to be scored. So if the, if the state has set aside X amount of dollars for acquisition, and there's three applicants that score out, we're all going to be splitting that amount, and then our match is going to be based on what we're awarded. But for the purposes of this, we're asking, we're asking for a million, and therefore, that's the, the match we'll, we'll put in. But that may change based on what we're awarded by the state.
Okay. Sorry, we're probably talking, I, I'm just not picking up what you're putting down, because, you know, if the total cost was 2 million, I see, 50% is a million bucks.
No, it's, no.
I just want to make sure, whatever's in this packet is more informational, I guess, I'm, I'm going to go by what's on the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Do we have an appraise value yet?
No.
No.
I will, I would kind of hold it off till the six o'clock meeting, but, but I, you know.
I'm, I'm good.
Yep.
I'll wait to see.
Okay, yes. This is just a, you know, one of the boxes we had to check, and we're, we're checking it. So. Any other questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
No, I realize that this was just one of the questions that was in the application that, yeah, I had to do for the city council meeting.
Yes.
And then the six o'clock would be basically almost like, that, that was my question. The six o'clock one, is it an official council meeting?
Yes.
Or would it be a public workshop?
No, it's a, no, it's a, it's, the application requires that the applicant, the local government, have a meeting. There are various different meetings that could be had.
I saw that, yeah.
So one of them is that it has to, and the reason, this is the reason why it has to be at six o'clock. It is a special set-aside meeting solely for the purpose to discuss the project. So we couldn't have it as part of this meeting because then it would be part of our regularly scheduled public meeting. Other jurisdictions allow you to have a meeting for the purposes at a, if there's a certain advisory board, a lot of, some cities and counties have.
Right, because I did see that.
Recs and parks advisory boards, which can have this meeting, and I believe we don't have it. So that's why we have set aside, if it's going to be the actual governing body, the city council, then it has to be a special meeting set for the project, for, set aside specially to discuss the project. And it, it gives the public the ability to speak and participate. So that's the purpose of the six o'clock meeting. So it is, it's a public, it is basically a public forum for the public to participate and, and, and discuss the, the project.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Come on up there. Mr. Hoffman?
Looking at the resolution statement on your agenda, I should have a couple of basic questions. As a citizen in the community, I think it's tremendous that the city is trying to acquire this property, but fundamentals, how much property is it?
Well, 70 acres and 39.5 acres that are developable.
39.5? Okay. And then I don't know whether there's been any discussion by the city commission or your staff about how the land might be used. Have no idea. But just, again, one point of input. I, as one citizen in the city, I think it's tremendous to have set-asides for open space preservation, or for whatever uses a city might see, have set aside for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021 dash oh-four.
Oh, move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. City Council reports. Glad to have Commissioner Becker back.
Yeah, thanks. I was, I've saved us all a roll call vote this afternoon. But yeah, thankfully, we, everybody kind of made it out okay. I have a few more extra pounds on my body, it feels like, from being inside my house for that long period of time, but all's well. But I did, two things. First and foremost, I wanted to share the plaque with everyone, and we'll keep it here at City Hall, but was able to participate in the 12 and under Apopka Pop Warner banquet this past weekend. For those that don't know, their 12 and under team won the, the national championship. So they were undefeated, won the national championship. So that team had a lot of, a lot to celebrate. The neat thing is, is, you know, they were looking for, they kind of called to action a few months back prior to the season starting. They had some, some youth on the team that wanted to participate but didn't have the financial means to do so. So I was able to help them out through our commissioner discretionary fund. So rightfully so, this has made it out to the City of Apopka because, what a great story, right? You, you expense a little bit of dollars to help people participate in the program, and where do they get out of it? A championship season, and just, you know, the secret to that success that they can, you know, have with them the rest of their lives. So wanted to share this with us, keep this in City Hall. And the neat thing, too, you know, the trickle-down effect is, that team is good, and of course, this is produced by the Apopka Plaque and Trophy. So Mr. Thornton over there, Apopka Plaque and Trophy, it just kind of shares the wealth. So wanted to publicly congratulate them, too. So, and then I'll renew my call. You know, we've gotten emails and stuff like that, there's sensitivity there, but I renew my call for HR director, again. Need to get that published. It's still not published out there from a job posting perspective. We need to get it on the books now.
And we're working through that now, Commissioner. I've worked through finance, I'm working through that one. So I'll get there. I do, I would like to say something, Mayor, if, if I could. I want to, I want to reiterate that if you get emails that come from, that are administrative things, whether they be issues that, that, you know, that would require my, require me to, direction from me, if you could send me those, forward me those, and I know a lot of you do, that's the best way to get it done. Those are things that we can handle administratively, and I promise you, and I've told most of you, that I do answer all my emails like that. I do take care of anything that comes through. So if you get anything like that that needs to be handled, if you'll forward me those, and, I think everyone does, but if you'll forward me those, I'll make sure that we take care of those. You know, first and foremost, as you know, that we always take, I do believe in taking care of the employees, so we've done that. But there's other issues that, that things that need to be handled administratively. If you'll send me those, I'll take care of those so that, that we can get resolved quickly and then you.
Yeah, and in all fairness, I mean, any time, our communication stream is very healthy.
Right, absolutely.
Very healthy. There's not, not an issue there. What I, what I want to do is, it's not, it's not fair on you either to have to deal with all of those HR-type of related issues either.
Right.
There, there should be kind of a distinction of roles there, and you don't bear the burden of all of that. It should, you have that trust in a director-level position. That we funded through our budget to take on that, that ownership, so.
And we're getting there, and I'll, and we're close. Well, I mean, like I said, that's, this is the last one, and I think we've got everything. Gladmer's on board and doing a great job already. So, yeah, we're, we're getting there, promise you.
Did it? Mr. Becker? Yep. Commissioner Smith?
I'm good today. I know you start, but it's all right.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, same here. We, everything that I've had, we've kind of already worked out, other than a couple of things I'll meet later on. And I'll save the rest for tonight's meeting. Excited for that.
Good, 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 good. Commissioner Blaskas?
Well, pretty much the same. You know, I want to thank Edward, because he's right. Any email I've gotten where I felt that it concerned the staff, the employees, I did answer the employee by telling them that we didn't have the authority in which to resolve their, their issue, and that I would forward it to you. And then I followed up by actually calling you. So I appreciate that you not only responded as quickly as you did to me, but you did to the person that was sending me the email. And what's the other thing I wanted just to give a special thanks? Last night, I know we, most of the commissioners, we all attended the Florida Department of Transportation meeting, which was very informative, and I appreciated the information, and, and look forward to the resurfacing that's going to take place here in Apopka, improve some of our traffic and pedestrians. And I wanted to give a special thanks to Mr. Jeffrey Weatherford. I have, I had a troop 11, Cub Scout Pack 11, I should say, had reached out to me, and.
Twelve.
Twelve. Two eleven.
Oh, two eleven. What did I say, 12? Okay, Pack Two Eleven. They have one more community service project they have to perform before they transition into the Boy Scouts. And the mom who knows me personally had asked, you know, they wanted to do something with the city. And so, of course, I, I suggested public services. And the reason for that was because during this entire pandemic, I have to give a big shout out that, you know, the garbage was picked up, recyclables, the leaves, and they were out there, nobody, you know, they were just there working. And sometimes I call them the unsung heroes in the orange shirts. And she was excited, she reached out to Jeff, and he's going to have a community project for them on Saturday, February 13th. So the, the boys are excited, the moms excited, and I just want to say thank you for making that time for them. And they will be transitioning into the Boy Scouts at the end of February. So thank you. So just a shout out to, to our public services, who are phenomenal. And it doesn't matter what the season is, the hurricanes, whatever, they are always out there doing, you know, providing the service that every citizen in Apopka needs and wants. So thank you.
Okay. Edward?
So I have positive news, and not so positive news, but I want to start with a positive. So, and I guess let me say first, Commissioner, yes, you're right. Those guys are, our frontline guys are working hard, they're always out there. As you see, we're doing some landscaping, starting to do the landscaping projects around City Hall, and had to do some irrigation work before we could do landscaping, to make sure we had water. And yesterday was a freezing day that you got to witness as well, I think, outside my office, where they're digging holes and putting pipes in, and the weather's like 40 degrees outside or whatever. So, so anyway, that was one of the things that I wanted to kind of mention in my report, too, positive things that we've got going on and around City Hall. And I also will mention real quick, too, that we got all, we got the information back. We're going to meet this week on the roof for City Hall and the cornice to fix the top. We should be able to give the go-ahead. I will tell you, the bids came back, they were within our budget. That is a great thing. So, and we should be giving them the go-ahead, I would think, sometime next week. So you should see the new roof on City Hall and fixing all of the, the wood, cornice around the top where it's kind of weathered pretty bad. So, so those are, that's some positive things. And then the other positive news, which, if you haven't had a chance, I know last night, we were able to see it when we had the FDOT meeting or whatever, but the significant improvements that we've made at the VFW, I think we've put in over about $90,000 worth of improvements. And so there's a couple slides here that kind of, so you can kind of see the before and after. But if you get a chance, if you haven't get a chance, you definitely should go by, because it really, we've really, it really makes, makes, has made a big difference. So you can see beforehand, you know, this is some of the pictures of the flooring and the, the lights. You know, notice how we had the little can lights on the top, and then the chandeliers that we had in there currently. And then the after picture. And the one picture to, to your left is kind of our, I think that's our zumba, our chair exercise zumba setup. You can see we're spread out, like you, like you said, like we needed to be, and we're spread out in the VFW. But you can see the new flooring is all consistent, it looks really good. And then if you notice the lights, we have new chandeliers that are in there, that look, that look very, very nice. And then if you notice in the top, the can lights are gone, and we've gone to a newer style light that's LED. So we have all new LED lights, the new flooring, it looks really, really good. So if you get a chance, you know, go by there and, and look at it. So, so that, I think that's, you know, I think that, it's well, we, we needed this, and it really looks nice.
And even the outside, you trimmed all the trees.
Yes.
The lights, it gave more lighting into the parking lot. It's not as dark, so.
Right, so.
They've done a wonderful job there.
Need to start renting it out.
So we're starting to, we'll be able to hopefully, hopefully, we can start renting out and, and help with, help income for rental, so. And then my next item. So again, you're, this is your financial update. This is the sales tax numbers for the month of January, which, if you recall, January would actually be two months prior. I'm sorry. January would actually be two months prior. I'm sorry. Yes, the January numbers would be the November activity. So you can see again, it's kind of weird, the pattern. It's twenty-six percent reduction over the last years, this month last year. So kind of interesting how that is sitting around that twenty-six percent number. Again, on the right side, you see that it's an annualized number. Again, this is not, you know, this is just an estimate. If you annualize that revenue number that where we're currently at today, we would fall about five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars short. Again, this is because our last year numbers, if you know, COVID didn't hit until March. So as we get further down into the year, you know, hopefully our numbers will be better than they were when COVID hit back in, in March for this year. So we, maybe we'll make some recovery there. But all in all, I just wanted you to see that we're about down five point seven, if you annualize the revenue number for the sales tax. So continue to still have that little difference between last year and this year, but we'll continue to monitor it each month so that we can stay ahead of the game.
Any questions for Edward? All right. Michael, anything to add?
No, I think I've spoken enough today.
All right. Under the mayor's report, got quite a few things again. Kind of go through them really quickly. Just, gosh, great. I had two phone calls this morning. We kind of firmed it up. It's been several years ago, we used to have the Art and Jazz Fest out at, at Jason Dwelly and, and we, it kind of fell apart. And, and so now we're, we're going to come back with a, it's going to be an art and music fest for December the fourth, that weekend. So it's going to be a partnership between festivals by Janet that do a lot of the local arts and craft shows in, in the central Florida area, along with Melissa Byrd from OCPS. So what we're trying to do is put, you know, some art from the students along the lake behind the amphitheater, intermingled with art and craft, you know, exhibitors. So you'll be able to see the, the, the school artwork as well as the, you know, things that you want to maybe purchase. Then on the stage of the amphitheater, we're going to intermingle paid talent with, you know, school, you know, the jazz bands and the, and even if they're, we want the drama club up there. So it'll be a, a great weekend where, where, you know, just want to let you know, just put on your radar. It'll be for December the fourth, that weekend. So more details to come as we, as we move along. You got the, the numbers for COVID. Just to let you know, been, been working with the Orange County and Department of Health and the state about, you know, us having a, a site here in Apopka. Finally got some encouraging news today. I think, you know, it looks like they might be able to open up us as an additional site for, for the COVID vaccinations. Working with Danny Banks over at Orange County and Department of Health. So looks like maybe, hopefully, knock on wood, in the next couple of weeks, we might be able to, to pick up and, and do some vaccinations for the, you know, the folks here in the, the Apopka area. Next up, the barbecue event. It's all coming together for the April ninth and tenth. We have now signed into place Bailey Callahan. She's a Winter Park native as our keynote, our, our headliner for that Saturday night. We're looking to get about four local bands, you know, local talents to, to lead up to her, her finale. We've got the Elks Club's going to be doing a cornhole tournament. We've got the Axe Throwing Company will be out there, you know, for a little, little extra excitement. The barbecue event will be going on with the People's Choice Award. And we're also looking to try to bring in some vendors that, that would complement the barbecue event. So for instance, like the Green Egg or Traeger barbecue sauces and, and rubs and those kind of things. So try to make it a little more interactive with the, with the, with the public. So really, I'm really excited about that. Obviously, everybody knows tonight, six o'clock, Camp Weewaw update. So for those out there, hopefully you can tune in at six o'clock. Next up, St. John's Water Management District, groundbreaking for everybody would like to come out. It will be February the eighth, so next, next Monday at one PM. So that'll be out at the site of, on Benyon Road. So come out and be a part of that. When it's really exciting is they're, they're going to be holding their, their regular board meeting here at city, city hall and city council at ten o'clock on February the ninth. So we're really excited to have St. John's Water Management, their whole district governing board here in, in city hall to, to do their business. The last item up, septic to distributed, distributed sewer project. We've had thirty-five homeowners request info on the program. Thirty-two homeowners are proceeding with the screening for the program. And of this amount, thirteen have elected to proceed with a sewer system inspection. So insulation should begin in early March. So with that, we have done our business and we'll see you back here at six o'clock.